Call to order the June 19, 2012 Board of Trustees Meeting and ask for roll call.
Trustee Ash, Trustee Reidenthal.
Here.
Trustee Daniels.
Here.
Trustee Blunder.
Here.
Trustee Maddox.
Here.
Trustee Rios.
Here.
Trustee Townsend.
Here.
Need approval or amendment of the agenda. We were sent one amendment by Peggy and Mr. Nguyen. Are there other amendments?
Mr. Chairman, I would request that you amend the agenda at the end to recess into executive session under the attorney-client privilege to protect matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship and, if not already, on the agenda that's in front of you, one to discuss non-elected personnel, to discuss the privacy interests of the individuals involved. Whether or not there will be action to follow, the Board will determine, I'm assuming, at some later point in time. Move approval of the amended agenda.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Approval of the minutes of the May 15, 2012 Board of Trustees Meeting.
So move.
Second.
Any additions or corrections? Right now, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay.
I did want to compliment Peggy. These are the most detailed minutes that I have seen in my seven years as a trustee, and I'm very appreciative of that because I think they reflect more of what board minutes should appear than what have been, where you've been accustomed to in the past. So, thank you.
One question I had about the order on the minutes. In the past, we've also included in the minutes, at least listed in the minutes, the personnel issues and Bryan's report. Personnel report was in there. Bryan's report was not in, per se. We've also included in the past, in what we've approved here, both Provost Report and Vice President's Report. We don't necessarily have to do that because we've approved it, and we all have copies, as long as Peggy has it all on file. My only question to the Board is, which do you prefer? Do you prefer listing, again, in our minutes we approve, both personnel and finance recommendations, or just go ahead and approve them, or shorten the minutes so they were approved?
I think it was appropriate, as she had done it, because I have felt that it has been a duplication, and just using enough more paper. The fact of the matter is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Attorney, but, I mean, anything presented in public meeting, even if, you know, if they're on file with the secretary, anyone can come and request them. Open meetings law, correct?
With the exceptions that you're well aware of, Mr. Rios, that's correct. And I believe that they are always on file in the hard copy in the President's office for review by the public, once the minutes have been enacted upon and approved by the Board of Trustees. Am I right, Ms. Friedman, about that?
Yes, sir.
And so there is no problem with the Board not getting those in this report. I mean, I agree with J.D. It's kind of a duplication of paper. The Board should have them from the previous meeting when they were approved. Everybody okay with that?
No.
Then we'll continue with that for real. I want to echo also, I think, J.D.'s thanks to Peggy about the job well done. Before we get in also, I want to compliment a couple of Deans. I'm sorry Dean Walker's not here, but you who were able to see her sing the National Anthem and God Bless America at the Chicago Cubs game on national TV. What a great opportunity that was for her, what a great job she did. Only disappointment was, they didn't mention Kansas City-Kansas Community College, but for all of us, what a great experience. And then, if any of you have a chance to hear Dean Hunt's House Jumpers, they played Friday night here for scholarships, and you can play a heck of a guitar, Dean Hunt.
Oh, yeah.
It was a great experience, and Kathy can back that up.
Oh, we loved it. It was wonderful.
Yeah, sensational. So, for the other Deans, the bar's kind of high here.
[laughing]
So, we'll be expecting. Anyway, thank you, Dean Hunt, and please you'll tell Dean Walker how much we appreciate her representing our college so well.
I'll let her know. Thank you. She's on vacation now, so, but I will let her know.
Good, thank you. Audience to patrons and petitioners, or anyone here would like to address the Board? Yes, sir. Oh, good morning. Step over here, please.
Do I get to speak from here?
You do. Give us your name and address.
It's kind of intimidating, you all. I want you to know that. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I have to give my name, Richard Maybien. I signed your sheet, the new sheets you have over here, so you'll have all the correct information. Thank you. I'm here at this time strictly to be able to thank the trustees for your support and financial support, and also your verbal support of the Breaking Asylum Conference. This was our last year, and I wanted you to know that I feel we, you and I, have created and presented something to the city that we can both be proud of. When we started this five years ago, there was nothing going on. They dealt with the low-income, poor people in our community, as far as environmental literacy is concerned. But we were able to establish this conference, created it in such a way that those of you who were able to make it this time, Trustee Reidenthal, who was able to make the conference this time, you heard me make the announcement that I felt we had done our part. The mayor was there, and everyone else was there. And if Kansas City-Kansas wants to continue having an environmental conference, then I think it's time for them to step up to the plate to make it happen. So, I thank you for standing by me and supporting me. Without you, I wouldn't have been able to do what I've done. Now, of course, the next thing becomes, where do we go from here? Well, I am very much concerned. I just returned from a conference in Florida with the NAACP that has now joined first forces with the Sierra Club, and yours truly just happens to be associated with both groups. So, I'm able to represent them here in Kansas City. The thing that impressed me the most when I was in Florida was the amount of young people who were involved in the conference. There was no young people from the Midwest, and we have very few young people from this part of the country involved in either the environmental movement or the NAACP. So, I found out that there are NAACP chapters at various schools and institutions, and I am going to do whatever I can do to get an NAACP chapter here at Kansas City-Kansas Community College. So, that will be my effort going from here. We need to be able to get more young people involved, and I think this is a perfect place to set as a foundation for that happening. So, you may not be through with me yet. Financially, you are, but I will always keep your breath of what we are doing and which direction we're trying to hit.
Thank you, Richard, and thanks for the last five years, which you've done for the community. And I know your conversation will be with Dr. Given for the NAACP chapter, so we'll look forward to some more information on that.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions for Richard?
Thank you.
Thanks again, Richard.
All right.
Appreciate it. Anybody else wish to address the Board this morning? Matt, do you want to address?
Matt's comfortable.
Communications, has Dr. Given any communications?
No communications.
Okay. Move to President's Report.
We have a presentation this morning. Ben Hayes, I don't see him, was to make the presentation, but it's the Supervisory Development Program Certificate to Daniel Ward. Yes. And so, I'm looking, I don't see Ben Hayes coming in, so I'd like to do that. I put information, yeah, I see Daniel Ward, but Ben Hayes was going to do it. Ben Hayes is not here. So, I'll make that presentation to him. We put information about the award in the folders for the board members to read, and it's quite an achievement, a supervisory award. We're very proud. The Congressman's Educational Institution, we feel really proud about this. It says, "This is to certify that Daniel Ward has successfully completed the requirements for supervisory development program." Thank you, appreciate your expertise.
Mr. Ward, did you find it to be a really good experience? Was it worthwhile?
Yes, sir, it was. I would recommend this to all supervisors, all new supervisors. Very good training, very good training.
Did you do this on your own, or was it something of college?
This is college sponsored.
Great, yeah, wonderful.
Ben Hayes' department is willing to be very, very adequately in this endeavor.
Thank you very much for doing it.
Thanks for sending it.
Yeah, you're welcome.
All right.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Ward?
I have one more.
Yes.
On June 28, in the Unified Government Council Chambers, they will be hosting the annual County Champions Night, and our debate and forensics team will be recognized by Mayor Riordan there, and it will be prior to the beginning of the meeting. It will be in the chambers. So, it'll be important to go and celebrate our students and faculty because we have had so many wins with that team, and we're so proud of them. So, those of you who can come to show support, it'll be good to do that on the 28th at 7:00.
Great, yeah, good recognition. Move to Personnel Report.
Good morning.
I'd like to draw your attention to item seven, information one through eight under the Personnel Report, and ask for your approval for item seven, one through five under recommendations, and there is a correction to 1A.
Motion for approval?
So move.
Second.
Any questions, comments regarding Personnel Report for Dean Marks?
Dean, I would like to pass on appreciation for these timely payments on the adjunct, or this under item five. You know, sometimes we've had those, much a year late one time, and these are all right on target. So, thank you to whoever's doing this to make it in a timely fashion.
Wonderful.
Appreciate it very much.
Yes, and I'll say thank you to continuing education.
Amen.
Thank you.
Any other question or comments? All those in favor, the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Thank you, Dean Marks.
Okay. Dr. Min and I are going to give you, I hope, what will be like a 15-minute presentation on the degree qualifications profile. So... Please don't do it from there. Technical difficulties. Just a second.
Oh.
Are we okay?
Yeah.
It's my little switch.
Hmm.
Okay, while we're waiting for this, I'm going to start. We were approached, Kansas City-Kansas Community College was approached a little over a year ago, I think it was in March or April, by the Higher Learning Commission to be one of 23 institutions to participate in Cohort Three, okay? Let me tell you a little bit about Cohort Three is the Degree Qualifications Profile. We call it DQP or DP. Let me tell you a little bit about the purpose of the DQP. Cohort Three is being funded by the Lumina Foundation, and the Lumina Foundation funds educational projects. It is a private, not-for-profit, I mean, private corporation with $1.4 billion in assets. And their goal in designing this Cohort Three was to come up with a way, a common currency, if you like, for all graduates. In other words, students who have a two-year degree, what is it, what are the competencies that they have accomplished in that two-year degree? When they get a four-year degree, what are the competencies? When they get a graduate degree? And what they were trying to do was to come up with a common way so that institutions, when they have graduates, we can speak about them in terms of their common achievements. So, what they did is, they came up with what's called the Degree Qualifications Profile, and it is a series of outcomes and competencies. That they then introduced us to the 23 institutions, and they said, "These competencies are what we want you to pilot. We want you to play with them. We want you to take them and apply them to your institution in any way that you think works best for your institution." So, we were, is it not working?
It is working.
Okay. Okay, I'm talking here, and I'm hoping this technology, because we have, okay, are we there? Here we go, good. All right. So, 23 institutions took this Degree Qualifications Profile, and each one was supposed to work with it the way that they deemed best for their institution, okay? So, what we, what we did was, we took the Degree Qualifications Profile, and we compared it with our existing 21st century outcomes, and we found a lot of commonalities. So, the first step, we had to come up with a proposal, which we then shared with the Higher Learning Commission, and work on this project for a year. They were so impressed with what we've done that they asked us to present at the annual conference, and this is what we presented. We called our project, and I think you have a handout that I gave you in your thing, it's called Minding Your DQP's Curriculum Mapping and Assessment. And the first thing that we did was, we took, have you got the spider web? Is that here? Let me just show you the spider web for a second. Is that it? Okay. This is the Lumina Foundation, and I don't know if you can see this. This is the spider web, and this is the goal of the Degree Qualifications. If you look, you can see the inner kind of spider web is the Associate's Degree, and then, as it moves on, that's the Bachelor's, and then, the Master's Degree. And what you're supposed to do is take those different categories, and you're supposed to build on them. So, that students who get the two-year degree are supposed to have mastered competencies in that area, and then, as they go on to the Bachelor's, you build on them, and so on and so forth. So, let's go back to our presentation. We called our presentation Minding Your DQP's Curriculum Mapping and Assessment. And the first thing that we did was, we took our 21st century outcomes, and we merged them with the competencies from the DQP. And what we found was, there was a lot of overlapping, and what it also did was, it added specificity and detail to our existing 21st century outcomes. And furthermore, what it did was, it pointed out some glaring omissions in our existing 21st century outcomes. Can you bring up the 21st century outcomes?
Mar, I'm going to ask a quick question. What areas were you looking at? I mean, what subject areas, or what, were you humanities, math, science?
It's generic, and it's across the board.
Clear across the board.
We did it for all our courses.
Good, thank you.
Okay. And let me just show you the 21st century outcomes. And you can see, in black is our original 21st century outcomes. In red, we inserted the Degree Qualifications Profile, and in blue, we added certain things that we deemed important, and that was part of the purpose of this, is that each institution can add certain things that they feel are important. We added the essential employability skills. And so, we integrated the whole thing. And if you scroll down a little bit, the area that was missing was the specific, come down to the red one. This one, keep going. Specialized Content Area Knowledge Outcomes. That was in the Degree Qualifications Profile, and we noticed that in our 21st century outcomes, we didn't have that. So, we've added it now. So, what we've come up with is a document that lists a total of 28 competencies, okay? So, it's all been merged now. Step two... Why does it keep going back to that one? Okay. Step two. Now, if you get on our website and click on syllabi, you will see we have generic syllabi for all our courses. Each syllabus has its own competencies. So, now, the next step was to see how the competencies in each course correspond with the 28 competencies of the DQP. So, what we did was this. In August of last, of 20, where are we now? 2011, right? August of 2011, at the Faculty Provost Meeting, I introduced the faculty to the DQP items, and then, basically told them during that first week of in-service that we wanted them to meet here and to bring their syllabi. And for each syllabus, Sunki had already prepared a spreadsheet with the DQP items and their competencies. And what they had to do is look at DQP number one and write the competencies of their syllabus which match DQP number one. Do you see what I'm saying? So, we had them, they all came up, they showed up, I fed them breakfast, they got into groups. Some of them did a syllabus each. Some of them worked together, like the English Department. They divided up their syllabi, and they worked together in groups. And all they had to do was write the number of the competency in each syllabus, mapping it, so that with the corresponding DQP item. And they got done in a couple of hours, a lot of them. Some of them didn't finish it, they sent it to us later. So, now, we've got all of these competencies mapped out according to the DQP. Are we going, so far, so good? All right.
So, Mar, if I look at this thing, the DP, our proficiencies are on the left side, and those are three courses across the top?
Right. Those are three courses, and for instance, CHLD 101, DQP number one is being addressed by competencies one through six in that course, 16...
So, that shows, it basically shows competencies, as they go through the system, three courses, what they're picking up.
As they go through that particular course, these are the competencies.
The sequence of courses they go through.
Yeah.
Okay.
And these are three example courses. There are about 700 courses that mapped out to all DP 28 items, according to their competencies.
And, you know, we tried to make it as facilitated, as easy as possible. Baz was very helpful. His team brought in laptops, so they could just call up their syllabi, and, you know, it went really well. And of course, some of them, you know, took longer than others. But pretty much, we have now mapped about 700 courses, okay?
Yeah. Basically, we wanted to know...
The objective, I'm wondering the...
Stay with us, you will see in a second.
Okay.
All right. We're all tying this together. Go ahead, Sunki.
We wanted to know, if we were to have these 28 items as our learning outcomes, we wanted to know where it was addressed, and which courses, with which competencies it's going to be addressed.
And to also determine, as we go through this, you'll see, where the strengths are. Are there DQP items that are not being addressed anywhere in the curriculum? Are there some that are being addressed, and where, and if so, how? So...
And second important thing is, if we were to assess these 28 items of learning outcomes, we know where exactly we go to, to assess those items, because we know now that all these competencies gets addressed, competencies were addressing these DP numbers. So, we know which courses to go to assess these competence, the DP items.
Okay. Okay. Activity three, slide three. Okay, so now, we've got this database, this humongous database for all these courses, and how, and you have to understand that each course, each three credit hour course, has a minimum of 21 competencies. So, this is a humongous database that we've put together here. And now, if you explain that to them, go ahead, Sunki.
The Excel file we just saw contains a lot of information, but the Excel file itself does not give us a quick way of knowing which DP items are addressed by which courses and which competencies. By combining all this information into one table in the database, it gives us a quick way to see where the DP items are addressed. For example, we can now answer how many and which courses address DP number two, for example, within a few seconds. And secondly, we wanted to strengthen certain learning outcomes when we took, gave the exit exam, the cap test, when students, certain area scores are low, then we know which courses we need to go to, to adjust the way we are addressing the DP items.
Okay. Okay, next slide.
And you're going to talk about assessment later?
Yes, we're getting to it, okay? Now, this database enables us to evaluate courses. And what we've done here is, we've come up with a, like a hypothetical program, so that you get your two-year degree in something. We are able to list, when you finish, when you graduate, which of the competencies you were exposed to, and in which courses. Do you see what I'm saying? So that if there is a weakness in some of the DQP items, then we can target that. Go ahead, N. T.
Yeah. This is an example of how we analyze a program. For example, if we had a series of courses, and is this series of courses adequately addressing our DP number one through 28? And this particular one, which is hypothetical curriculum, says that, by looking at this graph, this curriculum addresses DP number four through nine very heavily, emphasizes a lot, with a lot of competencies in it, and also DP number 14. But the rest of the DP items, learning outcomes, this particular curriculum does not address it that much on the rest of them.
What's the, you look at, call it a score on the left-hand side.
The score is the number of competencies in the classes that are addressing each DP items. For example...
So, what, saying, what makes it, what makes the course then adequate? You said one, five through nine did it. What score do you have to hit, that you say that's adequate?
Okay. When the faculty map their competencies and align them with the DQP, okay, then I'm taking a two-year degree, and I've taken these classes, then, because he's already mapped for each class which competency addresses which DQP, then we are able to map out and see, as a result of taking this program, me as a student, I had a lot of exposure to DQP items, whatever, one through nine, but very little towards the end of those DQP items. And...
What's adequate, or not adequate, is up to program coordinators and faculty. See if these number of competencies of classes, is that enough to cover those DP items? The faculty and program coordinators has to judge whether that's adequate or not.
So, it's possible that a score, I could call it a score.
Yeah.
But a measurement of 100 could be okay.
Could be okay.
Could be okay.
And you see, when you, when we feed this information back to the coordinators, they can look, and they can say, "Well, we didn't really address these last few DQP items, but maybe, because of the nature of the program, we don't need to address it." But maybe we do, and if we do, then we need to go back and examine our courses, our curriculum, our competencies, and make modifications accordingly. So, okay? Now, this is an online assessment reporting. This is assessment, all right? Now, what Sunki has done is, he has designed an online competency index form, so that as you, when faculty, at the end of the semester, they call up, they log in, they call up the course that they've taught, and automatically, the names of the students will appear. And they then go through, and they check off, all their competencies for the course are there, and they have to then check off how the students scored on each of these competencies. And he has done that for all the courses. Go ahead and explain some more.
So, instructor's supposed to go through the classroom assignments and normal activity that's done every semester. Instead of creating extra projects to create or assess the, our institution-wide learning outcomes, we're just using the classroom activities to assess these competencies. When that's done, all they need to do is translate that score into 1-4 scale, and use this system to submit the data. This is like submitting a grade by competence, instead of submitting a grade for the entire course. So, it's much detailed, and we exactly know which competence student did well, and which competency student did not well, in each course. So, that's a very detailed report about the student performances on, of the competencies.
What we could do as well now, because of this, is you get a student transcript... What we could do as well now, because of this, is you get a student transcript, and you can actually drill down, based on the courses that student took, you can drill down and see how he or she performed on these, on the Twenty-First Century Learning Outcomes. It's actually quite amazing, the amount of information that this uses. Okay, next one. Okay. Then what we do is, we generate annual reports on course-level assessment, and this is information that's given back to faculty. So then they can take a look and see, now, how did my students in this course perform on these competencies? And it's a kind of a graphic display. Do you want to say something else?
This is, instead of student by student, this is average in all the sections in Chemistry 111, so that, yeah.
So that, you know, the chemistry faculty can sit down and look and see, well, these are the competencies in our chemistry course. And as we look at this and see, well, our students, say, didn't do very well on this competency, we need to figure out a way of addressing that. Do you see what I'm saying? So, we did it by sections, not by sections, we did it by courses. So that ENGL 101, for instance, we, he generated a report for all the ENGL 101 sections, and it graphically displays how the students performed on these competencies.
These scores can be compared to previous year and set a goal and try to improve upon next year.
Isn't, uh...
Yes.
I'm getting into variables, and that, you've got one cohort of students that are totally unrelated to the next cohort of students, and yet you're making an assessment on the subject matter.
Yes.
Or the instruction. But the different, I mean, we're talking about individuals.
Yes.
So one individual may need one sort of instruction, but the next individual being assessed may need another form. And you have not addressed that within this...
Well, the, with the different set of cohorts, with the different instructions, if there were different scores, a results coming out, we can, you know, look into further why there is either higher score or lower score. It presents us some more questions to look into it. And we can start from there to know why scores are high or lower due to differences in instructions, or due to differences in different cohorts. And also, this, the scores can be kept. For the same cohort, they're going through different classes, and we can see, because we know by their competencies, let's say that writing part, in Competition 101, student did well on writing component of that class, how this student performances actually affect in courses and later. Because we can follow up on those same cohorts throughout, as they go through the programs.
I got it.
Yeah, go ahead.
Of course. On, on the transcript, like if you go to one school and the transcript, you know, it says you're ready for college. And then the other school, the transcripts, they got some of the same grades, but they're at different schools. How do we, how do you know what they need to have? I know you know how to do it when it's individual, but when you do it as a group, how do you do that?
You mean, when they're coming in from the high schools?
Mm-hmm.
We give them a placement test, is that what you mean?
So it'll be all on the placement test? Or will it be on what's on their transcript?
No, it'll be a placement test.
Oh.
Because sometimes, yeah, sometimes they come to us with a three-point-oh GPA, or sometimes even higher. They take the placement test, and they test into developmental. So, yeah, they take everybody, but this, this is, once they come to college, what we're talking about. We're not talking about before college.
Okay, but I'm talking about the freshmen, the first year out here.
Yeah.
Okay.
They take the placement test, and that places them according to the...
So that'll place them, and nothing to do with the transcript?
No, no.
Okay.
No. We sort of gave up on the transcript, because what we found was, we were accepting students who had a high GPA into our honors program, and they tested into developmental. And so we changed our requirements for the honors program.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, where are we now? Can you show them the assessment reporting form that faculty do?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not at this point.
Not at this point, okay.
Internet.
Okay. Okay. What we've done is, let's go to the next slide then. Okay? Now, what we've done is, we have prepared reports on courses, on sections, on all of that, and we've given it back to faculty. We've given the information back to the faculty who are teaching those classes. And during assessment day, we have an assessment day once each semester. The faculty, Sunkey has designed a form, and what they do is, they get together, they look at the assessment results, this is where we quote-unquote "closing the loop", they look at the assessment results, and then they decide, do we need to make any modifications for next year? And they fill out the form, and it's a very simple form. Yes, we do need to make changes, or whatever they decide to do. And so this is basically step seven, where we close the loop. They get a summary of the report, and then they decide, what, what adjustments do we need to make? And they set goals and targets for next year. And this can be done on the course level. And on the program level, if you are a coordinator, you'll get the results for all the courses in your program. And then you can make a decision accordingly, as to how you want to make the adjustments. Part of the goal in all of this is to establish a culture of assessment. We have been dragging our feet on assessment. And I think because of this project, and because of the work that we've done, we are moving, we have moved light years in the space of one year. And one of the things, one of the benefits of doing this is faculty are getting feedback. In the past, and I'm talking as a former faculty member, we used to have to do assessments and submit forms and all of this. We never got any feedback, we didn't know what was going on. So it was like just sending it off into nowhere. In January, we were able to present to faculty the results of their activity that they did in August. And they got incredibly excited, and they have been asking for more data, more information, because they realize that this is a tool that is going to help them improve instruction and improve student learning. So it has become very successful. We're not where we need to be, but we have made tremendous strides in the space of one year.
This closing the loop form is like faculty diary on assessment activities. They looked at the data, they reviewed it, they commented on it, and they also try to improve next year, what they need, plan to do. When we accumulate all this information, anybody coming new, for example, new faculty to be in the loop, for example, they can look at what they've done in the past. So this, they can look up what kind of assessment activities, what's the issues, and what's the change, so that they can see the history of assessments and the changes on a course, so that they can fit into it.
Yeah. In other words, we're going to archive all of these reports that faculty send to us, so that a new faculty member can come in and review what's been happening over the previous years. And, you know, that way establish this whole culture of assessment. So, okay. And then the last part, we have to, what HLC asked each institution to do is to map out your series of activities and to describe your project. Some institutions, incidentally, just focused on one degree. Others, one institution, for instance, hasn't done anything with curriculum. All they're doing is going out and talking to business and industry. We are the only institution that is doing this campus-wide for all our courses, and we have already mapped out all our activities. And HLC was just, you know, incredibly impressed, and they asked us to present. At the end of, this is a three-year pilot, at the end of it, we have to obviously issue reports to HLC about the success of the degree qualifications profile. We have to determine the measure of success, and then we have to let them know how are we going to proceed from here. Our participation in this project pretty much guarantees our reaccreditation. That's what they told us. They said that as long as any institution is making a good faith effort to implement the DQP, you're pretty much guaranteed of reaccreditation. Now, that doesn't mean that in 2015, when we are up for our ten-year reaccreditation, we don't have to get ready for it. We do. In fact, Sunkey and I are going to sit down over the summer and make a list of all the documents and everything that we have to start preparing from now. But this will be a big part of it, because of our participation in this project and how far we've come. And finally, let's go to the next...
I want to make sure our participation will lead to another ten-year...
Hopefully, yes, yes.
I mean, because it's lesser than, but of course, our goal is...
For the ten-year reaccreditation, yes.
Right. And we're understanding whether the participation, that we would qualify for that.
For the ten...
Not for a lesser.
We, we have to obviously do a lot of preparation, because the HLC reaccreditation process is changing. And we have to do a quality initiative, which is the DQP and assurance that we have to stop accumulating documentation from now. So it's not like we don't have to do anything, but it's just a question of, you know, this will go in a long way towards...
So are we doing like a dual-track then? Kind of a part of the, I guess I'll call it the current system, or older system versing this new?
This, the new system is going to be more streamlined than the older system, and there's specific criteria that they're looking for, some of which overlap with the older system. But a lot of it is going to be the sister quality initiative here, so... Okay, and let me, let's just finish up here. One of the things that HLC did is they established a portal for all the twenty-three institutions who are working on this project. And we were supposed to evaluate, not evaluate, but review each other's projects. And one of the reviewers was of our project, wrote a comment. You're supposed to input and write comments on each other's. And this is Dr. John Stone, Associate Vice Chancellor for Academic Affairs at the University of Wisconsin. They are participating in this, and he wrote, quote, "You worked out a wonderfully efficient process for linking scores or evaluations from individual course assignments and courses to your campus learning outcomes, enabling efficient tabulation of assessment data across the courses that make up a student's program, i.e. major. The automation here is ingenious, and the tool will allow a wide variety of data mining related to student achievement of the campus learning outcomes." And this is what he wrote on our site for our thing. And they, University of Wisconsin Whitewater presented their project, and theirs is obviously, it's a little narrower than ours. But they're also doing some interesting things with data mining. And they were asked, somebody asked them, how much have you spent on your project so far? And the response was $250,000. And we're doing ours on a shoestring. So I just want to say thank you to Sunkey and his staff, and everybody who is working on this. Our next step now, because we're already thinking ahead, is, Sunkey and I have talked about, we want to do a website, so that anybody can come in and you can click and see the progress that we're doing, and put up all of these documents. And the other thing that we've, we're talking about is, right, doing some presentations at some of the assessment conferences, if we have time, to try and write up some proposals. And the third thing that I would like to do, again, if we have time, is to try and get some articles published on this. Because the Lumina Foundation and HLC are really pleased with this. And we were told at the beginning, when we first got into this, that the Lumina Foundation, if it selects one or two projects to showcase, then they will fund us going all over the place to present these, this project. And since HLC is so pleased, we're hoping Lumina Foundation will sort of, you know, tap on our shoulders and say, you know, would you, would you be willing? So that's where we are with this. Questions? Do you have anything else, Sunkey? Questions?
I want to congratulate the college on going this direction. I think competencies is obviously the way to go. It looks like you've got a really good process in mind. So I'd really congratulate you on what you've done, and look forward to finished product. A couple of questions I would ask you. You know, what you're trying to do is student success.
Yes.
Obviously, you're driving student success, which means you've got to drive, if there's something happening in the classroom, you have to drive, change it in instruction. What's the professional development outcome of this? I mean, is this going to drive your thinking around professional development? And will we see more professional development targeted to specific areas? Or is it kind of a general professional development, is this sort of, you know, it's kind of generic? Is this going to drive more specific professional development? How's that going to work?
We, we hope so, and if you remember our strategic plan, assessment is a big part of that. Because what we're trying to do, what we're hoping will happen here is, is a faculty get this data, this feedback on how they're performing. They will then tell us, well, we need professional development in this area, or this area, where our strengths are, where our weaknesses are. But now that you've got all of this information, all of this data, we can just, you know, gather it as they want, you know?
And do we have the resources to support that kind of professional development? Because you could, you could have a number of professional development needs across the campus, which means either in-house, or bringing in people from outside, or something.
Yeah.
And, you know, as well as I do, it's got to be ongoing, it can't be a one-event deal.
Yeah.
So do we have the resources to, to support that kind of professional development?
Yes, we do. We have a faculty and staff development that has a budget, and then also Baz's staff occasionally puts on workshops. But I think the key to all of this is for faculty to tell us we need professional development in this area.
I totally agree with that, yeah.
You know, and, and so that's...
My concern is that we are able to provide that professional development on an ongoing basis, continuously.
Yeah. I, I'm helping.
And the other one, Tamara, I know, the other piece of this, of the curriculum, I know you're doing a lot of work on, on being confident that our curriculum is in good condition. So it looks like we've got a pretty good process in place here now to really strengthen the curriculum, strengthen instruction. Which should drive increase in student success.
Yeah.
Which relates that whole completion thing that, you know, the colleges are really working on now. So I think you're really on the right track. I really congratulate Dr. Givens and all of you for really taking this to another level. It really sounds great. Look forward to some more information, but...
Thank you.
Any other question or comments from the board?
Dr. Kamara, Tamara, you've done a beautiful job here.
Thank you, sir.
The main thing that I'm thinking about now, when does the green stuff start coming?
When does the green stuff start coming?
Money.
Oh.
Mr. Bodie, you want to take that question?
You know, it does, I can answer that question, sir. Not tied to this project, but tied to Tamara's report in here. If you looked, our performance review from the state of Kansas this year, we met every one of the performance objectives that the college had. And there happened to be some new money in the state budget this year. And because there happened to be new money in the state budget, and because the faculty and staff support to the performance objectives that we met 100%, we got 100% of our authorized new funding this year because of that. And so, not exactly tied to this, but what our faculty do and the staff and their support of them, we got about $750,000 extra thousand in the state of Kansas that we wouldn't have gotten if we wouldn't have met all of our performance objectives.
That's great. Tamara, you want to finish your report?
Yeah.
Sunkey, thank you very much for your work.
Can, can I just say one, one more thing here? And that is, even though it's just Sunkey and I standing here, giving you this report, I do want to stress that we, any success that we've experienced is a collaborative effort. All the deans, the vice president, faculty, staff, everybody has contributed to this in one way or another. And whenever we need any help, whenever we go to people and we say we need this, everybody rushes forward. So this is really a collaborative effort. So whatever success that we have experienced, it has to be shared with the whole institution. So, I do want to say that. So thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, anything else on your report? Any questions of provost regarding her report?
Do you want to ask me anything on my report? Thank you, Sunkey.
Mr. Chair, I'd just also like to say thank you for your leadership, Tamara, and Sunkey in this project, and to the deans, and to all that have contributed. I know that it was a yeoman's job to get to this point, but it's such a sense of pride for this institution to stand out from all the rest in Kansas because of the work that you're doing. So I'd like to say thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any comments?
Do you have any questions on my report? The T double A triple C T graph went out, it's not time.
Does anybody want to comment on the, combine the career center and the workforce development? There was some conversation about that.
My only comment is that, that I support it. I think it's an excellent idea.
Should I say something? This came about because of the work we're doing with workforce development. And a lot of times, what we found is that there was overlapping, oh, sorry, that there was overlapping with the career center, some of the activities of the career center. And so, Dr. Hunt and I discussed this, and we presented it to Dr. Givens. Why not combine the two entities? They do do some slightly different... They do do some slightly different things, but let's consolidate our resources instead of spreading them out. And let's put them under the umbrella and call it, I think we said, a Center for Workforce Excellence and Community Development, something like that. Because the term Career Center is a little bit outdated now. Everybody's into workforce development and workforce excellence. So we just thought it would be, and we presented it to Dr. Givens. I know we've got more discussion to go on this, but we just felt that this is a, you know, conserving our, consolidating resources instead of spreading things out.
But this is, I don't want it to sound overly simplistic.
Yeah.
This is a complicated merger, in my understanding, but I do encourage it. Strictly from a finance committee point of view, you have to have maximum efficiency for sustainable effectiveness. And so merging the two, I'm very optimistic, will lead to efficiency of resources, and then, of course, the effectiveness, overall effectiveness, what we're trying to do. But I'm imagining we'll be needing to get further updates as to how this merger, marriage, is going along, if it needs some counseling along the way or something. Because it isn't just a matter of just name switching or something of this sort. It really is going to probably be a process.
Mm-hmm.
Am I correct?
Yeah.
Dean, you might, I don't really want to speak to it. You know, we might have some periodic reports to the board on how that is moving along.
Yeah.
Would that be in order?
Yes.
I think it would be. It's a type of thing that, it's an idea, there's a variety of ideas around how to make that marriage work, but there's individuals involved and there's capabilities, but there's also the idea of what might be right, exactly what they're discussing.
Is there a timeline on when this would be? Are you wanting this to be in place by the fall semester, or is there a timeline on when it would be, the merger would take place?
Well, if you're asking me, I'd like it done yesterday, but that's just the way I operate. But we have to discuss this with Dr. Givens whenever she gives us the go-ahead.
Okay.
Well, I have one question. Logistically, does this cause some movement on campus?
It may mean if it materializes, we've got two people in the Career Center now. It may mean that some of the folks, two of them, in workforce development may be relocated to the new Career Center. So it may be that. But I think more than just moving people, what we really have to do is look and see what each segment is doing, and how can we consolidate so that there is no overlapping, so that we have a central location for all the activities that are going on. Because there is a lot being done now with essential employability skills training, internship, paid internships, those kinds of activities that I know Eric is doing in the Career Center, and I know that are being done in workforce development, and also at the Tech Center. So we really need to sort of consolidate.
And one of the reasons we have ongoing collaborative discussions is because it overlaps in so many different areas. Want to make sure that all people involved, all of the leaders, all of the staff that are involved in this have an opportunity for input. So that's why we're seeing it's taking more time than just making a unilateral decision and then acting on that decision. So it'll take a little more time.
Great. Thank you.
Look forward to those updates.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions for the Provost? Hearing none, we'll move to the Vice President's report.
Thank you.
Yeah, we need to move approved, acceptance, is it acceptance? Accept the Provost's report.
Second.
They moved and seconded to accept the Provost's report. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Provo's nay. Now the Vice President's report. Bodie, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
In my report, that's under your tab, I would like to call you to a correction that was brought to my attention this morning on page one. The last item under the Campus Childcare Center, that iSmart Start tablet that was acknowledged here, came from United Way versus Metropolitan Council of Early Learning, so.
Did you catch that, Wendell?
Yes.
We're going to be on top of it.
And I would answer any questions they have about my report.
Brian, I was going, in that same area, Campus Childcare Center, there's a purchase proposal for a childcare property.
Uh-huh.
What is, what is that about? And where was?
People have ideas and people bring.
So what do you think, specific? It was just they were looking at doing something, another property somewhere?
There's a property that Director of the Childcare Center brought to me to look at.
But you don't want identified at this point, I understand.
Correct.
Okay, but there is a specific thing you're looking at there?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
It's honored quite a moment, I guess it's a comment. I, again, am appreciative of both reports and that, but they do, there's a lot of information in both. And I would still appreciate the Provost and the Vice President, perhaps if you feel there is an item or two that maybe needs further elaboration, or certainly that we have, you know, reviewed that, I would certainly appreciate that being brought up if there is anything. Because I think we all read it, but sometimes after a bit, it's like, you know, now we get in a book, or we used to just get a little bit, so.
If I could, then please, if you would, on page four of my report, at the very top, I think one of the, perhaps the most important thing in my report would be that. The Police Academy sits next to us now. We had a student who was considering the possibility of hurting himself. There was an officer at the Police Academy that evening who met this student and noticed he was acting a little bit different. He contacted our officers. Our officers went over and spoke to the young man. One of our officers has been through the training to take care of people that are in that situation, so luckily for us, did one of our officers who was on part-time duty. We got that student calmed down. We got that student taken to KU Medical Center. They evaluated him that evening, and they brought him back. He was back in class the next day. He's better, he's doing great, as far as we know. It brought up two things. Our officers continuing to work with Kansas City Kansas Police, and to get the training that they need to crisis intervention training, and also the benefit of that building setting over there now on our property line. We wouldn't have had someone there that night if that wouldn't have been just the coincidence of that building being there, or the planning, or that officer being there at that moment. And so I think a collaborative effort between our police and the Kansas City Kansas Police, that location being in the right spot at the right time, we hope saved one of our students from hurting himself.
Great.
Thank you.
Great report.
And Mr. Rios, in response to your question about presentations at the board, I have asked the Provost and the Vice President to meet with board members prior to the board meetings, if there are specific items that require more detail so that those questions can be asked and more discussion can be held outside of the board meeting. So that is one of the things that we're doing so that the agenda, so that the board meetings don't run for a long time. But we will take into consideration your suggestion that we highlight at the board meeting those significant items that would be of interest. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then Baz, again, anytime we receive statistics, to me, the value in those is when there's a comparison, you know, like, I don't know, of 142,596, that sounds like a good, nice number, but is it?
So you want to compare this?
Like a comparison, because you do do that, like, for an example, on the Facebook, you say, you know, it's up 36% from the month before. To me, that, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, I mean, I'm just asking for one other, like, statement to say, you know, this, yes, this is, is good, it's going up, the usage is up, or no, usage is down. Because then, that gives us information and about, you know, we're trying to get more into the social media, that's part of the strategic plan. And so I think that that's valuable for us to understand if usage is going up like we would predict, or if it's not. Well, then what, you know, what action does this board need to encourage in order, does that make sense?
Can you do that like a three to five-year timeline, Baz? So it's not just year to year, but like, can you go back three years or four years or something short?
Well, we haven't started the social media dream years ago, so what we could do is months to months, or must do the previous three months before.
All right, no, yeah, I understand it's on a multiple, but just so we start building up, so we know how to support the strategic plan. You know, I'm thinking everything should be aligned to that, and we'll be talking about that in the budget even. I mean, the only way it's going to be a living, breathing, is for it to be constantly brought up and coincide with all the actions that we were taking. And I just, again, I'm not wanting it to be a more, I've already talked about how there's a lot of information. But at least this way, though, we know what the pinpoint, ah, I can say this is, usage is up.
No problem.
Right? Versing, you know, whatever else it might say. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, there was another issue I neglected to bring your attention under Mr. Bodie's report regarding campus violence. The response was consistent with the best practices that was recently issued by the Department of Ed, and I know that Mr. Bodie and Mr. Schneider have looked into that, and that will also be part of a report that might come to you later because of how it worked. And one of the things that Mr. Rios has asked previously from those things is to be kept apprised of that. And so I'm just saying that that was also another positive thing that Mr. Bodie may have undersold himself on.
Thank you for bringing that up. Good point. Thank you very much.
And then, under the Academic Resource Center, of course, we will be talking about our developmental education. But again, these percentages are certainly alarming to me, but I don't know how they compare. Again, are we on a rise in the percentage of reading, compensation, math, ESL placement in developmental? Is it steady? Is it declining, even though these are high? I mean, again, we don't have, we're just given, you know, one set of data, and to me, there is, Sunki, you remember, there's minimum usage to that, you know, you have to have, for data to really be beneficial, there has to be a trend line or something to then educate you on what, so again, if there could be something updated for us next time to say to us, you know, how things are going, especially when we are now hopeful, when we again get to the budget, we're going to be making, you know, sizable effort in our institution in trying to address this.
And I think one of the issues there is, and we will work on that, but these are just a monthly stat. The year-end report that's coming will show you what the trend for the year was, and it comes down, are they better than April's, or do we want to look back, are they better than last May's? And I think that's where, that's where, in these type of reports, when we do them just per month, it's difficult to, what should be the baseline? But we can do something, if not, it's higher than April, or it was higher than last May, or it's lower, just a sentence about the trend. And I think, I think we can work on that, but this is, you know, each month, you see the same graph and the same thing, and it's difficult. At the end of the year, we show in the end-of-year report the entire.
Right.
But that's where, and Denise has asked me about this, and I said, you know, I don't know what you're comparing to. And so.
But I think that's the dialogue that the resident is encouraging, that we have to have. And again, I mean, I'm making a statement, but it's kind of a statement question, because again, I would defer to expertise, you know? I'm thinking we're needing a comparison, trend, that, but maybe there's a disagreement with the trustee. But that's, you know, that's fine.
I think we definitely, I'm not sure we need a monthly, you know, to show the, April of the last five months, I'm not sure. I like the yearly report. Where you can see that yearly trend of what's happening with our students over the last five years.
I'm finalizing the annual report, which is submitted by all the deans, and I'm just editing and getting it ready. You're going to have more information than you want. It's about 170 pages, and it gives you detailed discussion, analysis from each of the areas. So, and that hopefully, you know, I'm just finishing it up, and hopefully it'll be ready before the next board meeting.
You know, I would ask you tomorrow, 170 pages, some of us will wade through that, but really would like to see an executive summary of the.
A six-page executive summary, sir. I've already done it.
Thank you.
Yeah. But I do encourage you to read it all, because honestly, it's amazing how much people are doing.
Well, yeah, and that's again, I think most of the trustees, as I'm hoping that the deans are appreciative, I, we, you know, we'll read the 170 pages, but after a while, you know, it's a thing of, what do we need to prioritize out of those 170 pages? What is, you know, we should really make sure we grab a hold of, right? As we're reviewing policies and so forth, and, you know, listening to the president and the leadership goals. And so that's again, where I would say, having those few speaking points, you know, for us to make sure it's in the forefront of our mind, whatever it is, even drilling it down to six pages.
That's what I've done.
You know, is, but what of those six pages? Do we really need to make sure in sync with the strategic plan? And how we are going about doing the work is what, is what I'm trying to get us to be focused on.
Either a question or comment for the Vice President's report?
Yes, I want to make sure that J.D. gets those pages, 175 pages, that's going to come forth and let us have the six summary.
Any other question? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion to accept the report.
Don't move. Second.
I can move in second, I'd like to accept the Vice President's report. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Provo's nay. Brian, you had a couple of other items there, though, on preliminary budget and draft procedure.
I wanted to get through the report to start with, sir.
Go for it, yeah.
As part of your package, you received a preliminary budget for the college. My issue, you got a corrected one this morning that you didn't need, because I was looking at the wrong copy that I had in my book, so I apologize for that. This has been through Dr. Givens. The finance committee looked at it, made suggestions. It is a preliminary review of where we're going to go. I think that there are two things here. One is on the capital outlay fund. We are going to ask for a half a mil increase in the capital outlay fund. When we reduced it by a half a mil a couple of years ago, we have really hurt our ability to be flexible in capital outlet. We have no suggested increase in the general fund mil levy. We also have built its budget on no change in the appraised value of Wyandotte County. We know that's not going to be the truth, but we have no indication yet from the county whether it's up, down, or around. And so we've built with what we know now. You can see that on the second page, when you start into the combined general fund and technical fund budgets, the second comment down, it says state technical education increase. This is where I was going to thank all the deans and the faculty and staff for making our performance agreement happen. There was $8 million of new technical education money in the budget that was approved by the legislature. Of that 8 million, we got over $750,000 of that. And it was based on a formula that Dr. Givens helped take forward to all the presidents on closing the gap between how much funding we currently have from the state against what, quote-unquote, they would owe us, versus some of the technical schools who have. technical schools who have, in, under the new funding, um, formulas, are seemingly overfunded. And so this is a, this is a methodology that if it gets approved, there is supposed to be $8 million a year in each of the five next fiscal years. And there's a formula that pays down the gap between what technical education should be funded at and what technical education currently is funded at. But in the first year that passed the 8 million, we got over $750,000 extra dollars for that. So we were very pleased, um, with, with that outcome. Next comment down, when you get to instructional salary, um, you'll see that Dr. Givens has approved three new faculty members. Um, and then what JD suggested, and as we're trying to get better, and I know this isn't anywhere close to perfection, but this is where we're trying to show you how these budget lines will support the new strategic plan. And so Strategic Directive 1, Goal 1, and Directive 3, Goal 1, all dealt with student success and improving the environment within the campus. And that's what DS does. These, one of these faculty members will be a brand new faculty member in developmental math programs. Um, it will, we are expanding, uh, I don't know, I'm trying to hide from the number this summer as we remodel the developmental math laboratories. Um, there is an increase in here for computers for us to, to work on the developmental math labs. There is a, there's a request for your approval in this month's finance recommendations to buy, um, more computers for the developmental math laboratory. Kramer's sitting out there smiling because I keep talking developmental math and all the stuff he's getting. Um, but what we're trying to do here is.
We have very high expectations, Dean Kramer.
So do I.
Okay.
What we've tried to do here is tie these changes into, um, the strategic plan. If you go down to the healthcare plan, there's some good news, if I can put it in. Um, I think we have settled with Aetna with about a 6% decrease in our, um, healthcare plan premium, which is a unique and unheard of. However, our usage rates last year were significantly lower. And so we're very happy that, that those are lower. Um, budget is pretty much straight where it was last year. There's a couple of, of changes. I think if you go to course fee expense, the very bottom line of page one, you'll see a significant increase. What we have done is, part of that increase, we collect a fee from students for technology. And that fee now will go back into this student course fee expense account and is going back into BAZ's budget in the information technology area for us to fund that, uh, those information technology, um, requirements to make us meet our strategic, uh, goal. So, one of the, one of the goals was the college would put resources where we needed to put resources in order to, uh, meet the, the strategic plan. I think this is our attempt at that. And, and I know you've all seen the same presentation each year you've been here, and it goes on. I, I, we are in the black on both budgets. Um, I would answer any questions. I don't know that we need to go through each and every line. I can, if you want to, this morning. We do need to establish a date for the full budget meeting. Uh, we need to establish a date for the official posting of the budget, and then a, a date for the final, um, presentation of the budget. Um, but this is, as, as we try to glean more information, if, if we get anything from Wyandotte County, um, from the assessor's office, we'll get closer. It does include a half a mil increase right now for, um, for the capital side of the account.
If I might, Mr. Chairman, uh, Finance Committee, uh, took, uh, a few hours reviewing the budgets. I want to assure the rest of the trustees on that. Uh, and also a meeting with Dr. Givens. Um, and as Vice President indicated, uh, our, our goal moving forward is to be able to establish in each of the expense lines, uh, how the strategic plan is, is being supported. Um, but this is kind of a, what we determined, I think Dr. Givens gave me the, the transitional kind of budget. We're not, we're not there yet. This is, uh, you know, the strategic plan itself, as you know, is a month old. Uh, and so, um, you know, we were, are not there. But I think it's very important for the deans to understand moving forward, that it isn't about sustaining past pattern and practice, or, uh, just because we've done something over the last couple of decades, that it's going to be continuing that way. It is about supporting our strategic initiatives. And I, and I hope that the board is in sync with that because I think that that's what we have approved, and we're wanting to make sure then, uh, most of the time, you need resources to make things happen. And so, uh, for that to be, we, uh, so, um, I think that that was, uh, that's the reason for those, uh, comments there. And I will remind the board in regard to the capital outlay, uh, increase, you know, those couple of years ago when we, we lowered it, we were really just searching for a way to try to in fact give relief to our, our citizens in a very trying economic year, um, nationally, uh, maybe even internationally, uh, certainly locally. But we are at a point now that we have to, uh, begin to improve our facilities, uh, expand them. Uh, again, this is part of the strategic plan. Uh, and so, uh, this is, uh, something where I thought it was very important, and we worked with, uh, administration on holding the line on, uh, the general, uh, fund mil. But really do not see a recourse if we are in fact going to be supportive of what is in that strategic plan in regards to capital outlay. Then we, we, we need to start, um, building that fund back up, or it will go into the negative rather than having anything, uh, there for us to be able to improve, uh, the various things that we're needing to do. Because in some of these initiatives, there'll be short-term costs for long-term gain. But we have to be able to pay those short-term costs. And so, uh, I think that the citizens will understand that, especially when they see the improved service, when they see our, our work that the provost just presented to us on ensuring the success of every student that comes in here, whether they're a high school student, or whether they're a career person needing to improve, uh, their marketability, or their actual skill level for promotion, or what have you, that we are ensuring that we are prepared, uh, to do that for them. So, uh, I think that this budget is just a beginning, uh, to that. Uh, we're going to, as a finance committee, we're going to have to, uh, dig in a little earlier in the coming, uh, year to ensure that everything gets aligned, uh, with the support of a strategic plan and where the budget is leading us. But I do think we've made a good faith effort this first go round.
Okay, we will end the meeting. We'll set a meeting date for a, like, full budget session because we need a lot more conversation around, uh, recommendation and, uh, what we want to do with that. So, kind of look at your calendars, and when we, we get to end, we'll set that date for a meeting. And Brian, the publication dates?
The, the last dates that are available, we, we have to publish before August 5th. We have to have the budget hearing before August 15th, and we must have 10 days after that to, um, to certify to the, to the county clerk. So, um, I have those dates. Your July meeting would be, yours, if you, if you have your meeting 17 July, your normal, um, scheduled Board of Trustee meeting, on that day, we can do the public, the notice of the budget hearing.
Yeah.
We can use that meeting. But your August meeting, if you stay the 3rd Tuesday in August, would be too late.
We had that last year, too.
Same thing, yes.
So we, so we're okay going up to 17th in July?
Yes.
At that time, we can set some dates for the rest of it.
Mr. Chairman, you've always set a plan and be an alternate date for things that come up as well. That was also part of your discussion.
Very good. Okay.
Thank you. And now I have a presentation. One of the initiatives that the board, I think, talked about at the retreat was to look at, uh, a draft policy on, uh, or a policy on minority, small business, and women-owned business, uh, contracting. Mr. Nguyen went to, um, great lengths and got us the whole city's ordinance, got me in contact with the city's, uh, people that work on this. The city's policy currently right now, they include, uh, a goal-setting, um, standard. But the city's policy right now on specifically identifying minority or women-based enterprises is at $250,000 for construction contracts. Um, speaking to Dr. Givens and with my crew and everybody, if we did it for $250,000, we may never implement the policy. Um, the policy, the draft policy that was in your, in your board package is three, three pages long. But I think one of the critical elements of that was, it starts at $100,000. If we have any contract that we suspect, a construction contract that is going to be over $100,000, then we.
Brian, I don't think we have that.
Yeah, we didn't get it.
It was right there in front of us.
And it was in.
It was in newspaper.
It didn't come in our package.
It might have been in our package.
Yeah, okay.
We got it. We got it. We got it.
It's not in the package.
Huh?
Yeah, it's not in the package.
Yes, I know, I have it, but I thought it wasn't. But maybe I had one.
Everyone have one now, I'm sorry.
Yeah, thanks, Brian.
What I, what I wanted to do this morning is to, on the screen in front of you is the, is the policy of the Unified Government. Um, and if you, it starts out, what, what I did, I wanted to get to this place right here. Mr. Nguyen went through the 32 pages of the Unified Government's, um, policy and highlighted in yellow areas of his, uh, that he thought were critical to what we, we replied, or what we, we reviewed. Um, we, we did do that. This is where at the bottom of this yellow area, you'll see the construction contract exceeding $250,000. However, their policy, I think is, come on, their policy is a lot more extensive than ours needs to be. Um, they, the next policy in this, the county administrator administrator will recommend to the board, annual goal. Um, all of this stuff in yellow here, we read, we used, however, we didn't include it in our policy because our goals will be different. Our, by February of each year, we got to do a report. Um, where it's, $100,000 construction contracts on this campus are few and far between. Um, except for the major bond-issued, um, construction projects that are already ongoing, it's been a long time since we did 100,000. We did the street, was about 500. We did the parking lot a couple of years ago, which was about 200,000. But $100,000 construction projects here, um, they don't, they don't happen with the frequency and the regularity that they do at the Unified Government. So what I did is I went and in, on the screen, you'll see in blue, highlighted around where Mr. Nguyen recommended this, the parts we put into ours. And it says, we, obviously it doesn't say the county administrator, it says KC KCC on your draft there. Um, we will implement a policy that's race and gender neutral to facilitate participation by minority and women business enterprises as prime contractors, joint ventures, subcontractors, and suppliers on KC KCC contracts. And then we went through, and, and that's the very first portion of the draft policy that you have there, where we took that wording almost directly from the Unified Government that says, we are going to address this issue and put this into our policy book. And the remedies that we're going to look at, and if you go down, I have them, I have them A to M, and the city had them one through a whole bunch. But I, I also showed where we got these, these remedies, unbundling large procurement so that you could put them into smaller contracts so that more businesses can apply. Uh, direct contracting to small prime contractors, perhaps lowering insurance requirements so that we could, as long as we protect ourselves, and we know that we're protected. The insurance requirement for a contractor on a big project is a very heavy burden on that, on that contractor. Perhaps we lower those, still protecting ourselves, but give a smaller business, a minority or a women-based business, a better shot at being able to meet that insurance requirement. Um, it talks about reducing retainage, expedited payment programs. All of those things are in here, are, are ways for us to make this policy, make this a more, um, easily accessible process for, um, minority and women-based enterprises. If, the, the next page of ours is, is an eligibility, um, and, and Mr. Nguyen highlighted this for us again down here. Uh, there's a lot of pages in the city's plan. We skipped their definitions. We thought we knew the definition of a construction contract. Um, and we know the MBEs. I think the next, the critical part of our next policy is, we're not going to go out and certify contractors as MBEs or WBEs. The city has worked, excuse me, the Unified Government, not the city. The Unified Government has worked closely with, um, the city of Kansas City, Missouri, who has their own, um, WBE, MBE certification program, the state of Kansas, the state of Missouri, the Mid-America Minority Business Development Council, the Women's Business Enterprise Council, and the National Women Business Owners Corporation. All of those six entities, or seven, six entities, certify businesses as MBE or WBE. When we think we're going to have a contract that meets this requirement, we will go to these businesses, these entities, and certify that companies meet that requirement. We're, we're a member of the Mid-America Minority Business Council. Um, we participate in their events, we do their reporting, we have submitted people for minority business of the year. Um, we have done those things. We participate with them. But we will be able to identify a small business, not a small business, an MBE or a WBE by using the resources that are already available in this six entities, where we don't have to try to do some kind of a program where we try to certify MBEs and WBEs. The Unified Government doesn't certify MBEs and WBEs, and they have a full staff that takes care of this. And David Root and I are going to be taking care of it from, from our side of the house. But this is where we took the second page of, of our, um, draft policy came from this policy. Um, it talks about a business must have a real and substantial presence in the, um, in the marketplace here. It goes on and describes what that is. We took from their paragraph C about Unified Government officials, converted that to KC KCC officials, employees, relatives, ineligible for this, um, in alignment with your conflict of interest, um, ideas and stuff.
Brian, did you define what our marketplace is?
I'm sorry, sir?
Have you defined what our marketplace is? Is that the metropolitan area?
Oh, I think it will have to be. It will have to be the metropolitan area in Leavenworth County. Um, JD and, and Clyde and I discussed this a little bit. Um, if we try, it, it comes down, again, we can look at these minority-based and, and women-based enterprises, but do we then narrow that farther into Leaven, Wyandotte first, then perhaps extend it to Leavenworth County, which are, is our service area? And how do we pull those down? And I, and what we talked about it, I think if we grab them globally from these other sources, we may get Kansas City, Missouri, but we still have. we may get Kansas City, Missouri, but we still have, then, when we get to the actual procurement action, we have the ability to provide a, if all things are equal, then we can look at Yandot County businesses first according to our other policy on procurement.
I'm just curious. I guess I'd direct this question to Mr. Nguyen. Do we need to define the marketplace? So if the guy that's one block in Leavenworth, or in Douglas County, he says, "Well, I should be in the marketplace," there's no definition of that. Should we define that in some way?
Unified Government has done some of that for you, and it is the Greater Kansas City Metropolitan Area. I think when I spoke with Mr. Banks, there were seven or nine counties that typically comprise that. But it is actually in the materials that you have, and I think that you would need to do that. And Leavenworth is included in that as well. Because what, what Mr. Bodie is indicating is that you've adopted some of the methods and processes from the Unified Government. And I might just say that they were very generous in sharing their resources because this is their full-time job. And they also appreciate that we were trying to make an effort to include more minority and women-based enterprises and, and they were willing to help us do that, to come up to speed and to do that. Answer your question directly, yes, it has to be defined. Two, it is defined in the regulation or the...
In the set of definitions that I skipped over, I'm sure I could go back and find market.
Unified Government, but the nine-county area typically called the Greater Kansas City Metropolitan Area is sufficient.
So there is a definition.
I'll find it and put it in here, sir, yes. It then talks about, we've, we've talked about the eligibility and qualifications of a business, and then we move to, unfortunately, the disqualification of a business enterprise, which we must, in fact, address if someone has lost their WBE and/or MBE designation from these areas. You know, we have to disqualify them from this, not disqualify them from bidding, but from this consideration.
And your materials allow a process for that that's fair. And although you've not had the experience in litigation in the past, you can learn from Unified Government, who has developed the expertise, and with Mr. Bodie, working closely with them, you will actually anticipate problems that they weren't able to anticipate, but for their past mistakes, and you'll be able to avoid them. And they seem, Mr. Chairman, really eager to help and to do this because they also improve their lot because they allow more minority-women-based enterprises to participate and become a part of the system, which should get you more competitive bids and high-quality competition and better services and products. But you're learning in the very beginning, and so they'll be hit and miss, but you'll have someone that sort of blazed the trail with you, as I understand it.
Good.
And then, and then we talked about, and Mr. Nguyen highlighted some stuff for us about who have, if they have not met their project goal, they, they need to be able to demonstrate to us a good-faith effort. And this next part of our, of our proposed policy talks about the ability for a contractor to come back to us and say, this is, and, and not just the ability, excuse me, the requirement for them to come back and demonstrate that they're, they made a good-faith effort to, to meet our requirements that were, that were here, so.
And that's in response to comments made by trustee Flunder and trustee Rios some time ago about the difficulty that these enterprises often have in qualifying. And then, I don't remember which one said it. It might have even been trustee Maddox, that it's helpful if, when you have these programs, you have informational sessions so that they'll understand where to go to learn where the jobs are going to be posted, how to navigate through the processes of each individual governmental entity and unit, and, and then to have a place to go in the event they feel that they weren't treated fairly or they have questions before they approach a trustee or worse yet, seek legal counsel. And so some of these things are in there so that the trustees are proactive as they start something relatively new to them. And that was also a suggestion by, I think, Dr. Givens and Mr. Bodie. I forget which one, but I know that's one of the things we also discussed.
And this also addresses a, a big contractor who has not met the, if, if we have a $300,000 job, which for us will probably be a big one in the next couple of years. Has he gone and has that, has the main contractor, the prime, has he made a good-faith effort to sub this to minority businesses? And that's what this addresses.
Right under that first paragraph, under good-faith efforts, it talks about fully meeting the project goal, goal. Administrator has made good-faith efforts to meet the goal. What is the goal? What is the project goal? How's that?
Well, the project goal is in any job where a portion of that job is $100,000.
Okay.
That we, that we make sure that WBE, MBEs have an opportunity to bid on that portion of, of the work. And I can, I can reword that.
Yeah, maybe go to the policy, not, maybe not project.
Okay, I got it. I can do that.
Great.
And this was, obviously, we're not here to have this approved. This was, and I, for us to present to you an update on the process and, and to get the comments, like, we have to, we need to reword that. We need to redefine those. And what I would ask is if, as you think about this and read over this in the next month or so, please let me know what you think we need to do to define this better, to make this more inclusive, to still protect the college from, to make sure that our interests are still protected, but to reach out more. And please give us that information so that we can try to get it into this. And then, I understand there's a policy review committee, and, and this has a long way to go before it gets to even a first reading.
Good start, though.
But this is our start as to where we would like to go with this policy.
Great. Thank you, Brian.
Mr. Bodie?
Good start on that.
Sir?
I have a question. I recall during this conversation, we also discussed some other issues relative to contract bids. And that was policy on prevailing wage and policy on documentation of workers for companies we contracted with.
Okay.
And that wouldn't appear in a document like this, but has, has consideration been given to that to offer us a policy?
We did.
I, I think the, I think we did that with those particular contracts, but we didn't put anything in place moving forward.
Okay.
So you're looking for a formal statement in board policy or board procedures?
Exactly.
Yeah.
It is not prepared.
Okay, thank you.
Well, we prioritize this. And again, the Finance Committee kind of, kind of took this just because it seemed like we needed to get moving forward on it. I don't know that those two particular would, would fall under Finance Committee. I would defer that to the chair, if there's, if he wants us to, we certainly can. But felt like because there was a financial angle to this as far as for the limitation, and we would tackle this. We did review this. And I do want the board to, I think that this would, again, even when we finalize it, would need annual review to, to see, you know, there could be some flexibility, some adjustments needed as we grow with this. Because the fact is that we do not have a department staff to, you know, review these things. But, so I didn't, I want it to be, I don't want it to be a paper tiger. I want it to be substantive, something that we can enforce and we'll work with.
I think that's ten of the board, all right.
I hope that the board understands that. Yeah.
Daryl, you had a comment?
One final question for you, trustee Rios. You also have the Fairness Board, which is a board that over, that involves itself and matters to make sure that the process is fair and that there's an effort actually to recruit and encourage MWBE participation. So that might be a discussion that the board would want to have with Unified Government to see if that might assist you as you develop this a little bit further, which we just neglected to mention.
Well, we did discuss that point, and we thought, rather than another committee, but this, again, this is draft, so this point of discussion, that they, for our purposes, the Finance Committee would in fact be the reviewer as it already reviews the bids that move forward to the trustees. Then part, the enforcement of this, when we approve it, a policy would then lie with the Finance Committee.
We can add that into the oversight of this and the review of this. We can add that into the policy as to where, where it fits and stuff. So we can, we can add that.
Well, that, that can be something the new, the new chair can think about when they move forward.
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
On suppliers, is there any way we could have one statement in here about ban from suppliers? And purchasing.
For suppliers on the construction contracts or for suppliers on everything?
Not just for construction. Just, it's a lot of minority suppliers that could sell to us, you know, if they had the opportunity.
You mean bundling the jobs so that they're smaller?
No, I'm not talking about the jobs.
Where we buy, where we buy janitor?
Like the bookstore, the bookstore buys a lot of items, and can we buy some of them items? Could someone supply some of those items?
Let's look into that, because there'll be some legal issues, but we can look into that.
Does UG have a policy on procurement other than construction?
Yes, they do.
Thanks, Brian. So further report in July, or do you need more time than that?
August.
August is fine, yeah, whatever you guys decide.
I hate to beg in public.
No, that's your timeline, whatever works for you. Yep. Okay, and Brian, we need payment of bills.
Yes, if I could, and we change numbers on the agenda, request your approval of the payment of the bills.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments regarding the payment of the bills for the vice president? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Prose nay. Financial report.
And I ask your approval of the financial report for, for man.
The Finance Committee did review them.
And we're going to end up the year with some money.
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna end up, we're gonna end up June, right, on June 3rd.
Any questions regarding the...
I think a dean or two spent a few dollars.
Any questions regarding the financial report? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Prose nay.
Thank you.
Recommendation, Brian.
And then on nine, C, one through nine, we ask your approval of those recommendations.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments regarding the recommendations?
The Finance Committee did review the recommendations. I do think we probably, I don't want the vice president to comment further, but items eight and nine are probably noteworthy. On nine, the rubber mulch really is a better, I, I recognize the additional cost versing the wood chip. But again, my experience as an elementary principal, you know, getting rid of the wood chip really is. And having investigated the long-term, because they last, there, there should be cost benefit to accepting the rubber mulch bid versing the wood chip. So I do want you to know the Finance Committee did discuss that and, and recognize the additional cost there. And then...
And also those scarred legs.
That's right. Yes. That's prone to injury. And then on the, on the, on the vehicles, it's something that we, you know, continue to try to keep vehicles. A couple of the vehicles are over...
Nothing under 150,000 miles is being traded in.
Just breaking them in.
So I just wanted the board to be aware of them.
Just getting them ready to go.
And I think we got a hundred-dollar bid on one trade-in, and the highest trade-in we got was a $500 one. And so that must be how much it weighed while they sent it through the scrapyard.
Yeah, exactly.
But one of them, we're hitting $100 on the trade-in.
Do we get a motion on this, so you... Need a motion?
I still have a question. You got the motion.
Yeah, where's the motion? Moved.
Second.
Been moved and second. Ed Wendell, you have a question?
One more, yeah. The, the audio system in the gymnasium.
No, sir, that's not the gymnasium. That's the audio system to provide us public, public notice and the audio in both the soccer track and the baseball side of it.
Oh, okay.
We ask other, we ask other companies to bid, and this was run from our media services people, and we just couldn't get anybody else that wanted to play. And so that's, that's what happened here. But this provides, besides just, and I learned a lot more about what kind of audio you have to put on a field than I ever thought I'd know. But for the soccer field and the track, you have to have audio that goes all the way across and all the way, because somebody may be clear on the other side of the world, and he's getting called to run the 100-yard dash. On the baseball field, you only need to put the sound out to about the shortstop. Because they really don't care if the outfielders can hear anything anyway.
Well, they signal.
And, and so this is aligned with WSKF, our architects, where these are going to be and what they are. They also provide us the ability to, from our speaker system, when we get it lined up with our emergency, we can announce emergency weather issues, take cover, get off here, get out of here, there's a tornado coming. That's what these speakers provide for, for us on those two venues.
Other questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Prose nay. Brian, real briefly, the construction looks like it's on, on track?
Yes. They, every day, it looks like it changed. We are getting a new banner up. It, it should be there. That shows the fields in a different relationship. We kind of had it upside down. Or backwards, or the negative got put in backwards. I don't know, one of those two. Thank you, Dr. Givens. They asked us to prioritize because of the delays that we had when we were going through the budgets and stuff like that. They asked us to prioritize. We gave them the soccer schedule and said, "See this game? That field and that track need to be done that day." And that's how they are planning, Nibahah and them are planning their schedule back. We would love to practice baseball there in the fall. If we don't, that's second priority. The priority is the track and the soccer field because we have a home soccer game. It's either the 23rd or the 24th of August. I can't remember exactly which day. But there's, there's a home soccer game that's going to play on that field that day, and that's what they understand their priority at. At the, at the Tech One building, and we got some of our first pictures, and I may get them forwarded to you. We have the aluminum studing going into the walls to hold up the walls and, and attach to the ceiling. And if you want to see a guy who has a powerful arm, every one of those is shot into that cement wall with that nail gun that has a .22 caliber blank in it. And there's one of those straps, well, there's a stud every 16 inches, and there's about eight straps on every one of those, and there's six bullets on each strap as he's putting them in. And that young man has an arm that's about that big as he holds that gun all day long. But it is progress. The roof on the Tech, the plaza is probably 90% today done. Will be done. Ma'am?
Is it attached?
Yes, ma'am. I went up when they...
That was one of our first issues, very.
I was on the roof, I was on the roof at the old Walmart building, folks, when they started pulling it off because I didn't want to see the rot we saw on the plaza, and we did not. There are patches of it, yes, but our contract included patching, and so that's being done. By, I think, end of July, both of them will be re-roofed. And once they're re-roofed, then they will really go to work on the interior, but they don't want to do that. When we had the really big rainstorm the other day, Cliff, how deep was the water? Four inches. Where we had peeled the roofs back as they were working, and we had the big storm, last we had four inches of water on the floor. But it's still concrete, so we just swept it away.
Very good.
It would be a good idea. I think if, you all want to set a time sometime, if you'd love to go down and see it. It would be, or individually, just holler, and we'll put a hard hat on you and take you through. But it's your schedule.
Is it air-conditioned yet?
No.
Well, wait. Maybe this falls.
I didn't, I went there yesterday for about an hour, and you're absolutely right. You would rather go if it's air-conditioned. I went on the roof just to get cool.
Brian, I just had, had a question that I, you know, I know we don't have a lot of time to address it, but I understand there's an issue with putting signage on the actual buildings of Tech Two and Tech Three. I know every time I drive by there, people, I mean, I know there's a sign right at the entrance, but what you see are just these blank buildings. And, and...
And obviously, I want us to, you know, I want the community to see what we're doing in those buildings. Is it a signage issue with the UG? Or, I kind of heard...
We'll work on it.
Okay. But you are, you are thinking about it, yeah? Because I get a lot of comments about that.
Yes.
Good, okay, thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up. Any report of committees?
Yes, I guess I'd do this. I think the meeting at Johnson County Community College a couple of weeks ago was very good. I was impressed a little bit with Dr. What's his name? Bumpus. He didn't tell me too much more than we had already figured out in our own meeting for Kansas. But it amazed me that it took 48 people to tell us what to do right and what we were doing wrong. I wish somebody had asked me, I could have told them. I think everybody got a copy of the report. Please try to read it and maybe we can have a discussion at one time or another on a couple of things that are in here. Tomorrow did cover the debris gap real well this morning, so that's one thing we wanted to talk about. But the, it's a couple of other things in here that I think that this board should really look at, especially the workforce part. The three Rs, I guess it's okay. It looked like it should be some kind of way that we can help. I don't know how, because we've got our own problems. But it's some kind of way we can get the scores up, help 500 get the scores up because we're going to be teaching remedial classes and we keep going backwards. And by this report, we are going backwards. So probably need to discuss that at either when we have our retreat, put that on our agenda so that we can maybe come up with some ideas of how we can help them to improve so that those students won't be taking those classes, remedial classes, because that's the most caused that I get, is that, you know, and I'm telling them, well, your kid had the opportunity to learn that before they got to us, and I'd pay us $71 a hour to learn what they should have already gotten. So we need to look at that real strong.
I was actually very impressed by the things our college is doing and planning to do that meet what Dr. Bumpus was talking about.
Absolutely.
I think we were, if you go through his comments and go through our strategic plan, I think we're on track to do exactly what they're talking about.
In particular, Roman number pages nine and 10. I felt like, I didn't know if you had reference to this prior to, or they plagiarize our wording, which again, we would take kudos for. But really, I, some of the wording was very similar, and so I took great comfort in that. I also think perhaps our provost, just briefly, but I know we are in communication with the school districts in our collaborative efforts in trying to shore up the rigor of curriculum, how to instruct that curriculum. You know, we worked with the science teachers specifically, as I recall, maybe even the math.
They were here last week.
So that, you know, so there are ongoing efforts, but again, these are going to be long-term. It's not going to be then instantaneously. And again, these cohort of students take time to get through the pipeline. But I do think that those efforts are ongoing and, as a matter of fact, I just understood we are actually participating in the library system and having collaborative efforts. One of the things that universities have brought to the attention of the school district is the lack of students' research skills, whatever they were called, but they were calling them library skills. Library skills and writing are two things. And again, that kind of goes back to the deception of them GPAs. You know, they've gotten them, but you know, multiple choice tests and so forth, they haven't been required to write a good deal. And so, again, finally, we're getting the pipeline to be talking to each other. I commend the leadership of our community college, being very open to showing some of the things that we're needing to work on and admit that we need to work on, and then being of assistance to others, just saying, okay, you know, we're not going to be judgmental, but we got to work together to figure this achievement gap out and having, ensuring the success of our community members. So I'm very optimistic about the future, and I appreciated the article. I apologize for not being able to attend myself, I had some work responsibilities I couldn't get out of, so, but, thank you.
I thought too, it was, Fitz Marian was saying, and I remember in the state meeting, it really pointed out the differences in how some of the smaller colleges in rural areas view developmental education versus those that are in urban communities. And I think certainly Dr. Bumpus, I think, I think that's where we were also aligned in terms of that need and how we deal with developmental education. So, I mean, that's just, that's the reality of Kansas, you know? But I think that, you know, as long as we're aware of the differences on both sides, but that's kind of interesting. I remember Marian commenting on that.
Any other committee reports?
Well, I think it was really good, Mr. Chair, that the provost was able to attend that meeting and also hear the differences and the comparisons that were available. So I think it will assist her in the work that she has to do for the college.
It's a good meeting. Unfinished business.
Do we want to, on the July 17th, that published notice of the budget, you know, that's like a five-minute thing?
Yeah.
But it's kind of separate from our regular meetings, so can we set...
Is that on the agenda?
But that, does it need to be a motion to set this?
You can do that now if you like, Mr. Rios. Set the date if you want to, yes.
There needs to be a motion to, when you publish it.
And that's that date, on the 17th is the date we give your, we get your approval.
Yeah, true.
You just want seven minutes now till it will be done, is that right?
Yeah.
Yes, you can, you can do that.
So I would, I would move that we set the July 17th regular board meeting as our time to publish notice of our budget hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close nay.
And do we want to go ahead, we recognize that our August board meeting will not coincide with the timeline, or do you want to wait, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I think we'll be setting the whole year scheduled on the July meeting, and I think at that time we can address that August meeting also.
Okay, I'm fine, thank you.
We got in our pack at this community college survey of student engagement, and I was just wondering if sometime, not this meeting, we don't have time, but sometime we could have some conversation. I thought that was a very interesting survey, had some good information. I'm just curious, was this something we volunteered to do, or was this something that all colleges did?
We always, this is the S E, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have a copy of it, so I'm not quite sure what you...
It was a 2011 key findings, I just thought it had some, anyway, if we could, maybe the next meeting, or sometime we could find some time just to have some discussion about that.
I have a copy of that.
Some of the things are related, some of the things we're trying to do around developmental education and relationship with students and so on, so.
How close is the 2012 S E? Is it, or we don't have a 2012 model of the S E?
I don't know where you, where did you?
This is 2011.
2011, yeah.
Yeah, it's a 2011 key findings.
The 2012 S E, when does, when do we get the response for that one?
Five years.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I was assuming that they do the results, Sangi, and then they just provide these to us? Is this their report?
This is our, our summer response.
Okay. Okay. And the info comes from them, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So our students, is it a, well, we talked about the meeting, yeah, I think it's good information.
Are we addressed?
Okay, let's say we can set a date for this budget meeting. If you have your calendars with you.
We're going to set the budget meeting for August.
Is it for August?
Are you talking about...
Budget meeting, pre-budget.
Yeah, the pre-budget. We need a meeting to discuss the budget for the July meeting. Is next week too early? You want to look for that the week after the 4th or after the, last week in July and June?
Think you need, think you need the poll of the sheriff?
Want a lunch, evening?
Lunch made in the week of the 9th, does that work for people? That's the week before our board meeting, so we would know.
How about a dinner meeting? How about a dinner meeting?
Yeah, we can do it maybe a week earlier, J.D., just in case there are any things we want to, you know, give us a couple of weeks.
Well, it's the week of the 4th.
Yeah, that's...
I didn't know if people would have...
Yeah, tough week.
Only a two-day week.
It's only a two-day week at the college.
How about the week of June 25?
June.
That's next week.
That'd be next week.
That's next week.
Dinner meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Long as it's before Friday, that'd be good. I'm actually going to...
The 26th?
26th, it's 26th of June?
The Tuesday.
Tuesday, yeah.
Are we looking at what time?
I thought I heard an evening meeting.
Yeah.
That's not a good day for me.
No, but I have another meeting.
The 26th is not a good day.
Yeah, 27th is not, how about the 28th, Thursday, the 28th?
28th?
That's when we go to the unified government counter debating for the 6th.
Okay, next week?
Well, if we, if we met before that, and then we could go to City Hall at the conclusion, am I being too optimistic? If we had a 5 o'clock, I mean, surely we would need...
Is that on the 25th?
Two hours.
On the 28th, he's talking.
Prior to the...
Yeah, prior to, like, you know, 4:30, 5 o'clock. Would that work for people on the Thursday?
Just for me.
Thursday, the 28th?
28.
That's bad. That's bad for you.
So 5 o'clock?
We'd have to be, if we have the meeting here, we'd have to be out by 6:30 because they're going to do the presentation before the 7th.
I would think that wouldn't be a problem.
Are you thinking about Don Ash? You know, he needs to be considered, but I think you need to check with him, at least.
Well, he usually can make it after the, at the 5 o'clock, that's when we've been having...
I'm talking about the budget meeting, I'm talking about the budget meeting. He may want, he may want to attend the budget meeting.
Right, yeah, that's what we're saying.
We're going to have, we're going to have him on a phone call here pretty, in our executive session, we can ask him.
Okay.
So the 20, Thursday to 28th at 5?
Tentative? Does that work for the rest of?
Looks like it. So check with Don and see, so if we don't encounter tentatively 5 o'clock.
5 o'clock on the 28th?
We've never taken more than an hour for that, so we, I think we'd be done by 6.
Okay.
Okay, so we are ready for an executive session. How long, Daryl, how long are you going to need for your...
About 25 minutes, just from my part, a little shorter than what I anticipated, not as long, Dr. Gibbons.
Okay, so we probably need an hour.
And Dr. Gibbons, you have your part as well, would that be enough time for you, ma'am?
We also have to do my evaluation.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking of.
And I have another issue.
Hour's fine, yes, sir.
Hour's fine.
Hour? Okay, need a motion for executive session for an hour.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close nay. We will start at 10:15. And where are we meeting?
In 30 minutes.
Back where we were before. Okay. I want to thank the people from Michael Kimbrough, Randy, and the two camera ladies here for doing this. I admire you for standing up all this time and doing that, but Michael, thanks for doing this. I think we're going to make this a permanent situation where we're televising, reporting, and putting it on our website. So appreciate your efforts from the department. Thank you very much. Okay.
Michael, do you have a list of the airing times for the television airing?
1:30 this Thursday, Monday, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday the following week, and each time at 1:30.
Okay, we'll reconvene for executive session in the room down there where we were last time at 10:15. Okay, we have a motion for adjournment. Wendell, you motion of adjournment?
We adjourn.
Clyde, seconded it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close nay, we're adjourned. Good meeting.